It is six o'clock on on the 22nd of March, and I'm calling the meeting to order. Could we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Sarver.
Here.
Chair Solomon.
Here.
Commissioner Dahl.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss Boyd is absent at this time. Commissioner Benyon.
Here.
Commissioner Hubler. And we still have a vacant position. Planning and building supervisor Jason Sullivan.
Here.
Planning Commission Clerk Debbie McDonald here.
And at this time, we take a poll.
And also for the record, for staff attendance, we have Leslie Harris. Sorry. Fired. Management analyst for with the City of Bonnie Lake. And then Clay White, who is the consultant hired by the city, who's with LDC.
Welcome. This time, we take a poll for the next meeting, which is the 5th of April. We have a showing answer who can attend.
I'll be on the video. I'll be here. Should be able to do video. Just so you know, that's my birthday, so.
Oh.
Oh.
I'd be very.
That's dedication.
And we'll be talking about Allen York Park.
Okay, you got my attention today.
All right, we have a quorum for the 5th of April. So we'll meet next then. Approval of minutes for the 1st of February 2023. Could we have a motion? Craig?
Yeah. Second.
Second. Any changes, corrections?
I didn't see any.
Call the question. All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
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 Pose. The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Public comments and concerns? None. Public hearing? None. Old continuing business? None. New business? 2024 Comp Plan Update.
So I will kick it off real quick, and then I'll introduce the kind of the team so far. We've got Clay White with the LDC, who's been kind of hired as the one of the prime consultants to lead through the policy update of our comprehensive plan. Also Wesley Harris, who will be leading the public engagement plan, and then myself, who will be doing bits and pieces throughout the whole update. So with that, I'll turn it over to Clay.
Great. Again, for the record, my name is Clay White. I'm the Director of Planning with LDC, and we were hired by the city to assist with the upcoming Comprehensive Plan Update. And our purpose today is just to give you that introduction to this project, which we'll be working on with you a lot over the next year and a half. And so really just painting that foundation for you about kind of the what are we doing, why are we doing it? Some of the background and then, you know, answering any questions that you might have. I know that it sounds like some of the commissioners were on the on the commission at the last time the Comprehensive Plan was updated, so you may be familiar with some pieces. But I want to just make sure we do that refresh because it's there's a lot that we do and it's complicated. And so hopefully today's really useful, and I know we're going to talk about engagement as well. See here. Oh, there we go.
It's slow sometimes.
Okay, perfect. So just do a little briefing objectives and the project team. So what we hope to get out of tonight is that we can introduce the project team really briefly. Provide you an overview of state and regional planning requirements that help inform the work that the city is going to be doing. Provide a little bit of a project schedule overview, especially focusing on where Planning Commission is going to be plugging in. We're still working on the engagement plan and the and the and the project schedule, but we can give you kind of an early look. And then the team's going to be looking at the public participation plan and and hopefully you can weigh in on the approach that we're going to take to engaging with the community. And of course, along the way, answer any questions that you have. At least for my for my role, ask questions whenever you have them. Certainly don't have to wait till the end. Hopefully this can be just a good engaging conversation. So in addition to LDC, you're going to see myself and Matt Covert, who's a senior planner in our office. And we part of what we're doing is we're going to be helping with developing background information. So doing some of the study that's necessary to inform the work, be working on some of the policy development, and then going through the SEPA process, the State Environmental Policy Act. So we'll be doing what's called an environmental impact statement. We'll be working on that. It's kind of a joint effort with the city. So I mean, we always like to look at hopefully our work as an extension of the team's work here and that we can just work seamlessly with Jason and the entire team. PRR is focused on the community engagement piece, so you're going to about how we're going to work with the community. And so I know that we're going to talk a little bit about that tonight. And then SCJ Alliance has been hired to help with the transportation pieces. So modeling transportation impacts, assisting with policy. So you'll be seeing probably Matt Shea, but also Ann Sylvester when the transportation element comes forward too. Let's just do a little bit of a Comprehensive Plan Update overview. So the Growth Management Act was enacted in 1990, and it provides that framework for coordinated growth. And so at the state, the regional and the county level, and then local at that local level as well. So it requires the cities and counties to develop a comprehensive plan to manage growth. And and we'll go kind of through what the required comprehensive plan elements, so what what's contained within your comprehensive plan in a moment. The plans has to be updated every 10 years, and so we have a December 2024 deadline to complete this project. What you'll see in the schedule is we're going to work to get it done sooner. So we're going to work to try to get it done by September, October of 2024. And it provides a framework for planning out to 2044. So it's a 20-year plan. So you're looking at how you're planning for growth and transportation and parks, so that you have all of those pieces ready when growth occurs. So it's that proactive piece. And I know that one of the things we're talking about the city is actually having the plan while it's a 20-year plan, extending it another five years out to 2049 to kind of coincide with the city centennial, since that will be, you know, the city will be 100 years old. And so we can kind of work that into the planning process. And then I think one thing that's really important as we talk about requirements of state law or regional planning is that growth management was modeled as a bottoms-up planning process. And so that means there's kind of this teeter totter of state and regional planning requirements, which we'll talk a little bit tonight. But there's a lot of local discretion and deference. So that means is, you know, there's things that you're required to do and to look at that you can do it in the way that meets the needs of Bonnie Lake, that you can plan in the way that is meets your character. And so there's this kind of fine balance, and I think that's why we're here is to help you, you know, walk that line. But making sure that this isn't a top-down process. And so there's a lot of discretion involved. And we want to make sure, like, as we're talking about the engagement plan tonight, we want to make sure that it's uniquely Bonnie Lake. You know, you don't have to do the same thing as the city next door, 10 miles away. So the Growth Management Act has 14 goals. I'm not going to go through all of them, but they you can kind of see they range the gamut from transportation and housing to open space and permit processing and private property rights. Early and continuous public participation when you're doing planning, and then public facilities and services. But the goals in the Growth Management Act are very short, broad statements, but a goal by itself doesn't do anything. It has to be implemented. And so the goals in the Growth Management Act are implemented in a variety of different ways. So permit processing, for example, has its own statute that talks about how you permit process permit applications. And that that implements that goal for processing permits in a timely and consistent fashion. Many of the goals are implemented through a comprehensive plan. So that would be elements that you're required to have as you do community planning. And I'm going to kind of talk about how it's framed up in the Growth Management Act. The the city has put its has put a very good spit on its Comprehensive Plan to make it kind of uniquely Bonnie Lake. But the the primary things that you're that you're planning for in your Comprehensive Plan are population and employment growth. You're planning for housing. You're planning for capital facilities and utilities. You're planning for transportation, parks and recreation. And then and then the city has elements for cultural arts and heritage. You've got economic vitality. And one of the things that, you know, and environmental stewardship, but that's kind of rolled into your land use element. One of the things that the city does really, really well is it has an implementation chapter. And what you'll find in a lot of comprehensive plans is it's a policy document. So it says, we're going to do this and we're going to do this, but then policies have to be implemented somewhere. It's in a code. It's in a regulation. It's in a committee that you form to see it through. So the city has an implementation chapter that says, here's our policies. This is the directives of what we want to accomplish, and here's how we're going to accomplish it. So it bridges that gap. It's 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 a it's a really good thing. So I know we'll be updating that as part of the Comprehensive Plan. So within the Growth Management Act, there are some key requirements and issues. This is broad, so we're going to narrow it down as we get into the issues that are impacting the city. But there's a requirement to update the Comprehensive Plan elements consistent with state law changes and case law. So that means there's a lot of state law changes impacting planning that have changed since the plan was last updated in 2015. Sometimes there's cases that go to the Supreme Court that change how you do something. So there's so we'll be updating the plan consistent with those. There's also a major requirement to update critical areas regulations or your Shirley Master Program consistent with best available science, but that's been completed. So you already have a piece of the Comprehensive Plan Update already done. And some of the key issues that will that have kind of come up through case law changes will focus around housing and how you plan for housing. Tribal participation in planning processes, or at least that involvement. And then there's several other minor state law changes. And one of the first things that we're going to be working on with the city is reviewing state law changes, reviewing policy changes, and looking at where there may be gaps or things that the city needs to address. So we can we'll do that early on, and then that's those are items that we'll be talking to the Planning Commission about. So one of the things that's part of the new housing element is this racial equity analysis report, and Jason's going to talk about that.
So I believe it was the last legislative cycle, there was a bill passed called House Bill 1220, and it amended the requirements for the housing element in your Comprehensive Plan. One of those things that it amended that's different than forever since we've been doing Comprehensive Plan is two things. One is we have to establish housing by income band, housing targets by income band. The second part of that is we had to look at past zoning and land use decisions that could have related or resulted in a separate, a disparate racial impact. So it affects one minority group more than another minority group and look at ways and policies for undoing undoing that those disparate racial impacts through our Comprehensive Plan. So PRR will be taking the lead on this application. I could have just gone to the slide. So yeah, this is the House bill I was referring to. It was 1220. We have to plan and accommodate housing for all affordable segments. So we're getting income bands from the Department of Commerce that will basically show how many housing units we need to add for those making 0 to 30% of the area in median income, 30 to 60% of the area in median income, 60 to 80 and then above, 80 to 120 and above. And then we have to show that we have housing types that are affordable to those housing groups at enough capacity. So for example, you know, we'll get a number of saying 740 housing units for one thing. We'll have to show that we have capacity somewhere in our city zoned for 740 housing units that are affordable to that economic section. And then we also have to document various to housing affordability, such as gaps in local funding, development regulations, et cetera, and identify policies and implementation steps to undo those. You can stop me if you have any questions.
Can I ask a question on the the income bands that we're getting? Like, I understand that the types of housing that those different groups could potentially have, but how do we control for like how much rent is or how like how like it seems like we don't have control of that?
So the the way that the Commerce is setting this up is we have to show that we have capacity.
Okay.
So that's a that's a mathematical calculation. And so, for example, for those those making 0 to 30% of the area median income, the units that are most affordable in general would be multifamily densities of 20 units plus per acre. So we have to show that within the city, there is enough land that could be developed with at that density.
Okay.
So so for example, if we only have enough for 300 units, we'll have to increase that supply capacity somewhere by changing zoning designation somewhere else. So first, we have to agree to the income bands, which we are working through right now with GMCC. We're hoping to have some numbers mid to late April. Once that happens, that those numbers will be given to Clay, and Clay will begin to look at kind of there's two parts to this, what we built between 2020 and now, because all their numbers are based in 2020. The second part of it then would be based on our buildable lands analysis, you know, the methodology, how much land we have in each of those zoning categories, and what's the maximum type of development that could occur in those density in those zoning classifications. And then we'll know how far we're off in either one. Could be a lot, could be a little. We don't we don't know at this point.
All right. So it's like just types of housing, not necessarily what rent is going to be like or what.
Yeah.
How much the houses are actually going for. Okay.
Because we really don't control.
That's what I was like. We don't control that.
We don't control. I mean, there's things that we're supposed to do to try to help lower the cost, but we don't really control rent. And there's even an understanding that we don't build housing. So I could have all the capacity, but if someone doesn't build it.
Yeah.
That's not going to that doesn't penalize the city. We just have to show we have the capacity.
Okay, good. That makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, that was going to be a nice question is, under those restrictions, when it gets out of the realm of the mathematics, where are you going to find somebody to build under those conditions?
That's not that's luckily, that's not what we have to solve, right? Like.
Not yet.
Right? That's not that's not an answer that we have to provide at this point. We're not required to demonstrate how we're going to provide the funding for 0 to 30. 0 to 30 always is going to require some sort of governmental assistance. They don't get built at market. I mean, there's no way a developer can take that on. But the at this, you know, this Comprehensive Plan Update, we don't have to answer the question of how they get built. We just have to show that we have the capacity.
Thanks.
So PRR will be doing the work on the on the on the desperate income, looking at kind of past zoning practices, past land use decisions, and seeing if they have resulted in this kind of this disparate racial impacts, and then begin to identify how them, how to do that. The report that they're going to prepare will center on the city's most vulnerable populations and include analysis of equity issues within the city. It will identify the assets and the strengths we have in order to address those. We'll have to be consistent with the requirements and the and we'll have and the report will be finished by June 30th of this year. The report identifies what the issues were, what the issues are, and identifies policy steps we could take. That report will then feed into the Comprehensive Plan work, and we'll work on the actual policy work that goes into the Comprehensive Plan. Do you have any questions on that one?
I guess like, I want to make sure I understand. So like, is it based on like the square footage of our city?
What?
The how much housing there has to be in each range?
It is based on, and this is kind of where we 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 and the county are trying to figure out. So the county is giving a housing target for the county. That housing target then looks at, based on the current housing supply, how many housing units are affordable in each of those income band ranges? And then it projects into the future how many housing units you would need in each of those income band ranges, and there's a delta. Right now, there's a right now, we're looking at probably 111,000 houses countywide. Then those are broken down and assigned to cities, and this is kind of where we're we're working on the numbers. Either based on the percentage of housing growth the city is expected to plan for between now and 2044, or the amount of population, the percentages are slight. I think it goes from like 2.9% under one and 1.3% under the other. So that's what gets assigned to us, and then we have to show based on our current housing stock where we have to add more units in each income band. Because we may have an income band where we have a surplus, and so we don't have to add any in those. We may have income bands where we have a delta, which I will tell you, the 0 to 30% is going to be a delta. There's going to be a number in there, and we have to show how we're going to add housing units capacity-wise in that housing range.
So that, like, I know that, you know, that apartment complex that wants to be in there over at WSU Forest, would that be part of what you guys are looking at?
It would be part of it.
Okay.
I think this is shit. They had me doing it. You want to do regional planning requirements? I'm fine giving it to you.
Okay. I think I put in these slides, so you might not know what's in there.
Go for it.
Little hide little unicorns. So in addition to your Comprehensive Plan meeting, kind of those state law requirements that are contained within the Growth Management Act, the city also has regional planning requirements. So there's kind of two things you're you're aiming at here, and they'll converge towards one plan. So the regional planning requirements come from Puget Sound Regional Council, often referred to as PSRC. And they're a regional transportation and planning organization that that does planning in Snohomish, King, Pierce, and Kitsap County. So it's only these four counties, kind of our urban core, that has this extra set of planning requirements. And PSRC focuses on transportation funding, so they they get the federal transportation dollars and allocate those to to cities and counties within the four county region. Have a regional transportation plan and economic development strategy, and of course, there's regional planning. And so thought process is, if you're if you're planning for transportation, there's certainly a nexus between where you're making investments in transportation and where people live. And so that's where this kind of comes together.
Before you go on.
Yeah.
I always like to remind everybody, PSRC is not some other governmental agency. It's made up of all the elected officials of the cities within the counties and the counties. So I think is Bruce Downmire the chair this year? He was last year.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah. So Bruce Downmire, who's the county executive, was the chair for PSRC. So a lot of people hear Puget Sound Regional Council and think it's some sort of other governmental agency, unelected body. No, there's not people running for PSRC office. They're selected from the councils that were elected. So at one time, Justin Evans, who was a city who's a City of Bonnie Lake council member, served on the Puget the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board. I serve on the Regional Staff Committee. So it's made up of the cities and towns within those four counties. I just like to always point it out because I think some people think that it's a separate organization that was just plopped in and it's done through, you know, it was actually created through interlocal agreements between all the cities and counties.
I think that's awesome because it gives everybody buy-in where they need to be able to be heard.
Yeah, and that thought process is, you know, a road doesn't stop at your city limits. There's coordination. And so there's already coordination that takes place between Pierce County and all the cities in the county, and we'll talk about that in a moment. But also regionally, that there's a lot of interconnection between jobs and housing or transportation or these things. And so focusing that at the regional level, make sure that there's some syncing up of the planning that occurs at the regional level. And so at the planning for on the planning side, PSRC has developed Vision 2050, and those are called multi-county planning policies. So your Comprehensive Plan has Comprehensive Plan policies. Those are multi-county planning policies. So they're policies to be considered for the four county region and kind of direct and provide strategy on how the four county region should grow. The multi-county planning policies and regional growth strategy are implemented through countywide planning policies. So those are policies that are shared between Pierce County and the cities within the county. So Bonnie Lake is a part of that. So you can kind of see it starts at a higher level, comes down to the county level, and then, of course, the city is then implementing the countywide planning policies. And if everyone does that, there's some connectivity and coordination happening when planning occurs. So just a few of the kind of key issues. Vision 2050 is focused on growth in the four county region. You were expecting between 2017 and 2050 that the four county region would grow by 1.8 million people and add 1.2 million jobs. That's a lot of change. And, you know, as you as you might know, the way our state laws are structured is that almost all of that growth will happen within existing urban areas. So it does not all of it, but a lot of it's going to happen within existing urban areas. That's a lot of change. New and revised policies focus on areas such as climate and environmental health disparities, equity that that Jason had brought up, and housing and displacement. So there is some, there are some areas with state law changes where you're also going to see those at the regional kind of that that policy level. So they kind of converge. So the issues that you're that we're going to be focused on are the things that have changed since they did their last update. Because so and those are some of the bigger themes that you'll see kind of play out. Let's see. So that's kind of the regional process, and we can talk a little bit about schedule. So we've got our kickoff this month that we've that we started with the city. There's a lot of background preparation that needs to happen and and kind of studies. So we're going to be updating kind of some growth target information so we can understand how much capacity does the city already have to accommodate growth, and so how much more will it need? We're going to be looking at some housing housing needs analysis, and then we're doing some policy gap work to kind of understand what is it we're going to have to tackle. And then we'll be updating the Comprehensive Plan between, you know, kind of looking around June to March of 2024. And what what we've kind of talked about is, instead of going through and amending the entire Comprehensive Plan with a as a draft with lots of policies and elements, of bringing it to the Planning Commission in chunks. So we can maybe do two elements at a time, and so maybe that would start late summer, early fall, and then carry through the winter where we can come through, review those policies, get your feedback. We can also take public comment on them two at a time, so then we don't send that message to the community that, hey, here's a 200-page document. Provide us comments over the next 30 days. It can be, here's a here's a discrete set of policies focused on housing or other topics, and then we can do engagement on that. And and then we would, once we get all of, once we've gone through each element with you, then we would come back at the end of the project with a final document. But, you know, at that point, you'll have seen all of these chapters. And then we're going to be doing the environmental impact statement as well. So that's going to be starting in May, and that'll carry through June of next year. So that's there's several elements of doing an environmental impact statement. First, we're going to scope the environmental impacts from the from the planning that we're doing. So it's, you know, what are the what are what's kind of the range of transportation and land use and housing impacts that could have on the environment? We'll be reviewing those. We'll also be looking at alternatives under SEPA. So it'll be providing like a menu of options that the city could could take to to accommodate the growth and to and to figure out what's best. So I kind of look at them as SEPA bookends, where you study one end to the other. And then the council would have the and the Planning Commission could adopt somewhere in between. However, there is going to be a what's called a preferred alternative, and that's what's going to get the most study. So that's what we're going to do transportation modeling on, be doing a lot of our key study on is is that kind of primary alternative. And we'll be engaging with you early to make sure that we kind of set up those bookends of what are the things that the city may look at ultimately adopting. So that will run through June, and then, of course, we're looking at hopefully getting the project completed by October of 2024. And if we can get it done earlier, I know Jason would be very happy. So we'll we'll see what we can do there to be efficient, but also make sure that we're engaging with the community as well. So I think I can turn it over to Leslie at this point.
Thank you. So as mentioned, that we've already started meeting, but we're working closely with PRR on the Public Participation Plan. And we've had a couple good meetings so far to start talking about the strategies and the tactics that we want to use to gather that that community input. It'll be on the updates of the vision statement, the land use and the housing elements of the Comprehensive Plan. And the public participation will also include the NEPA requirements for the EIS process. Our goal is to reach look at reaching residents, businesses, and also our community-based organizations. And we want to make sure that we prioritize prioritize reaching the harder audiences in the communities, such as those that are older, Spanish-speaking, and with lower incomes. So we're looking at how to do that. And then also, we want to make sure to engage, analyze, keep them updated on what we're doing, and then reengage with them as well. So that's going to happen throughout the entire process. So some of the strategies and tactics, so interviewing those community-based organizations. And that's where we could use some feedback from you and input. Those may include like HOAs, community clubs. Those may include like HOAs, um, community clubs, multifamily, um, apartment complexes, our senior center, um, our senior assisted living facility, um, the school district, faith-based organizations. So there's an extensive list, um, but we also, there might be key people in the community that you know that could help get us into those organizations, um, into those groups. So that's, if you have, know people, feel free to share that with me or Jason. I'm also here today. So we're going to field four mini-surveys in English and Spanish, um, attend tabling and community events. We're also going through, um, the Parks, Trails, and Open Space Plan, so we're going to use that opportunity to also talk about the comprehensive plan update. So hopefully getting, um, really good feedback on both of those. And we'll host public meetings and hearings. So we're looking at engaging, um, right now, we're in the process of, um, developing our public engagement plan, um, but starting in the summer, um, as we're doing the, the EIS scoping, and then, then again in spring 2024, and then concluding it in the fall of 2024. So there'll be many stages throughout this next year and a half that we'll be looking at, engaging, getting their feedback, um, evaluating it, developing those plans, coming back again. So it's going to be a continuous process, um, of making sure people are engaged.
Is S E I S?
That's the supplemental environmental impact statement. So and then there's a draft version of that, and then there's the final version.
Jason, does that link into the utility survey you were talking about last night?
Separate issue, so I was going to touch on that during, um, general questions.
Yeah, so I can just mention that, um, so some of the materials that we're developing, so we'll develop flyers, we'll have social media posts, we'll use our Facebook and our Twitter accounts, um, e-newsletter articles, so we can push newsletter articles out, um, keeping the city website, that will be like our main component of our information. So we want to make sure that's always fresh and up to date with status updates, um, and then making sure to push it out through any of our resources that we have, communication tools that we have. And then, um, sharing that with our community-based organizations, so they can help spread the word to our constituents as well.
And when it comes to a lot of approaching the community, a lot of people are on social media, utilizing that piece to make actual like events. That's where people see a lot of that, and they then go, oh, hey, there's something coming up. And then it sends them reminders that they're interested in. Then it helps it stay in their brains a little bit longer, and it actually gets them to be more engaged in what's going on. It's just, it's harder as a city, I'm sure, to what the fine line is and what you're allowed to do and what you're not allowed to do and stuff. So, but just, that would be a big one, I think, really pushing that social media side as well, or really pushing the social media side to get them constantly to the website, into the specific links. People are just not as easy to approach outside of that, so.
Yeah, we're hoping to use, you know, a good combination. So we want to be into the, into the community through tabling and, um, being a face right out in the community and engaging that way, but also virtually. So looking at our social media and how we can engage that way. So I think there's, um, various approaches, and we want to make sure to get as much feedback from a broad amount of people as possible.
For table and events, do you plan to start that this summer, like at Music in the Park?
Yes.
Things like that?
Yep.
Okay. And then what about going into like the faith-based organizations and actually like having a little table set up? Even if somebody's not standing there, at least it's like, there's flyers sitting out and kind of getting that in their hands somehow.
Yeah, we'll evaluate like what our capacity is as staff, but maybe we, um, also, we can ask you all as our, um, representatives as well to help spread the word and talk about it in the community and make sure that they know that there's opportunities to share feedback and give input. So, but we definitely want to get into our faith-based communities. They have newsletters as well and ways that they communicate with their members, so we would like to be able to utilize those resources as well. Definitely.
Are you also engaging the food banks in the area to hopefully, um, get to the low-income families especially?
Definitely. And I'll, yeah, be connecting with Stacy Serenich on that as well. Yes.
Yeah, there's also like the Prairie Ridge one that.
Yes. Mary Beth, yeah, I can connect, yes.
Awesome. We also have, um, there's a few of us up here that are on, it's the twentieth anniversary of Beautify Bonnie Lake, so we should have a huge turnout this year, so if you guys need a table there too.
That'd be wonderful. That should be a great resource. Thank you.
Sounds great.
That's a great idea. Something to do at the beginning.
There just all.
There you go. It's usually around my birthday, so September twentieth, summer nineteenth.
It's the third, the third Saturday, which I want to say is the eighth. I should know that, right? Should know that.
Yeah, that would be a really good one, because there's a lot of people that come to that too. And everybody wants to be engaged in the city at that moment in time, so that's a way to really draw their attention.
Good audience. Yep, thank you. That's great.
It is the sixteenth.
Any other thoughts or, please feel free to reach out anytime, just if you have any ideas and thoughts. But as we, I develop the plan, I'm sure it'll be shared, we'll have that available as well and make sure to share that. So everyone in the community can refer to it and see what we're doing, what our plan is.
If you can share the list, then we can figure out if we know anybody.
Definitely. Thank you.
The actual public engagement plan will come back through both the Planning Commission and City Council for kind of final adoption, once it's. Leslie and her team does everything. This is the first time I actually have a team for a comp plan update, so I'm kind of like, feeling awkward that I not have control over everything, so it's kind of weird.
Fingers, where are they?
This is, I'm not used to this.
Delegation's amazing.
No, it's amazing. It's great, because everybody brings a different skillset to the table, so it's, it's, it's really good that we were able to pull this together.
I guess I just would leave that with, I mean, two opportunities of doing the strong engagement as part of this process is, you know, folks tend to come when there's a permit that's being issued, but this is the planning that sets up that process. And the other thing is that, you know, there's really a strong opportunity to reach communities that are impacted by the land use decisions that are made as part of a comprehensive plan, but don't, but aren't at the table when those decisions are made. And it could be, you know, opportunities to even, you know, participate virtually, and think about how that, how that encourages, could encourage families to participate who can't come to a meeting for two hours, but could listen in and find out what's being proposed for housing, or, or jobs, or for parks and recreation. And so if we can tease that out, then that's also going to help you as you make, you know, great recommendations on, on policy and land use changes as well. I think that's all that I've have.
That's all I had for, for this topic. And like I said, uh, when we, if you were here four years ago, I was the lone plan, comp plan person, and it was a team of very well done. That's true. It was me and Debbie. It was a team of two. This year around, we have a much better team. Not that Debbie and I were a bad team, um, but I think a team that brings a lot of different skillsets and ideals to the table. I'm very excited to have Leslie on board to help with the communications part, because I'm like the one person who doesn't have social media, so I don't even understand it. So I'm like, social media, what do you do with it?
You put babies on it.
So I, I have no clue. So that's what I'm saying, I'm just really excited that Leslie has agreed to, and has been gracious to join the team and handle the public participation please, and Clay and his team, and PRR, and SCJ, I think it's going to be a, a lot of work, but I think the product will be even better than the one we had last time. I don't have anything else?
No, I mean, I just think as we, um, uh, get the schedule in line, then we'll probably can probably chat with you a little bit about kind of a schedule and what might come to you over a longer period of time, so that you'll at least be able to kind of say, okay, this is what it's going to look like this fall and winter, and when we're going to interact, and, and wanted, uh, spend some time with you going over policies or other types of changes that will be considered. So we should be able to get that to you, kind of long in advance of those things, actually.
Any final thoughts, Leslie?
I really look forward to working on this project. This is actually my first comp plan. So, um, but the community engagement is my passion, um, it's what my former position used to be, um, in my previous, um, city. So it was community engagement relations and all that stuff. So I'm really looking forward to working on this project.
Well, that, we'll turn it back over to you, Chair.
We'll go to the order. Correspondence.
Um, I did have a correspondence with Commissioner Strauss Boyd. She had an unexpected business commitment come up, and that's why she's not here tonight.
Chair will, yeah, I'll get to it.
I'm sorry, sorry.
The chair will entertain the motion to excuse Commissioner Strauss Boyd.
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there discussion? No? All the question, all those in favor of excusing her? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. She's excused. Draft comments.
Uh, just a, a few for the order, to go to the order. We will be taking the motion, uh, next week to City Council to reappoint, uh, Council Member, Commissioner Binion and Commissioner Dole, and also appoint a new commissioner for our long vacancy. We are, I did write the, the motion in such a way that the new position is appointed to the unexpiring term, so that even though it's like three days, they'll be able to attend the April fifth meeting, which is the day before they technically become the next term. So that's going forward to, at the March twenty eighth City Council meeting. What Grant was referring to is, in your utility bills next month, you will get a one-page flyer talking about our Parks, Trails, and Open Plan survey. There will be two QR codes on it, one in Spanish and one for English. So reach out to all your friends and family, let them know that if they don't want to open it because they don't want to look at their utility bills, get it, that's not what my job is, but in there is that survey link, and it's a QR code, so they can do it right on their phone. The more responses we get to that, the better we'll understand how to plan for our parks. So, um, that should be coming out next month in your utility bill, two QR codes, one Spanish, one English. So to everybody, take the survey, the city really needs the information, because it's really going to drive how we design these parks in the future. And on a sad note, I don't know if Debbie wants me to say this, but Debbie will not be the clerk for much longer. Oh, Debbie's still with the city, but she has moved over to Administrative Services, which is our loss and their gain. But we'll be getting a new admin for our department, which will then become the clerk for the City Council, or the Planning Commission, so. Maybe. I don't know what the schedule is. I don't know this. So, yeah, Debbie should be here April fifth, probably the May meeting it might be, I would hope, both, so that we don't leave someone out to dry, but I just want to congratulate Debbie on her, on her change, and I'll let you know that that change is coming, so. And with that, I can answer any questions, if you have any for, for me.
I have a question. For those that are doing like e-billing, like, are they still going to get a paper survey, or is it going to happen email-ish?
I, I would, I don't know how utility billing does, if it's just in a copy of what you would get in your mail, I would assume yes.
Okay.
But I can reach out to utility billing and ask for sure.
I just wonder, because then, because if I'm sharing the information, it's be like, if you, like, I just don't know, some people get, my husband does the billing on that part, so I, I don't even know what we get. But just, I know some people, a lot of people do e-billing, so they don't even open their mail anymore. So if it does come in paper, I could just be like, open the paper.
And that's what I'm saying.
There's something else in there.
If, if you get a hard copy utility bill in the mail, even if you pay e-bill, just open it, because there's something else in there.
Okay, sounds good.
I don't feel like Bonnie Lake does that though, because I have everything e-bill that I can possibly get in the City of Bonnie Lake. I have never been able to get that as an e-bill.
Okay, so maybe, that's, that's the reason.
Oh, I always, that's the one thing that always comes in the mail, and you look at it, and you're like.
Once again, I can't talk about what the other four pages in there, I'm just talking about the one page that I had.
Okay, and that'll come out in April?
Yeah, it should be in the April mailer.
Okay.
Mission to comment.
Other than congratulations. Hopefully you love your new position, and you miss us a whole lot.
You will be missed.
Yes, you will be.
Sensitive. And he did an excellent job, and talking to the people afterwards, I heard a lot of good comments.
Well, that's good. I was a little nervous going into that one.
Job, sky ain't people, there's rough, rough crowd over there.